Well, I want to thank you all for coming out to our third public hearing of the Small Minority Business Committee. We're here at the historic King Arts Complex on Long Street. I almost said Lincoln Theater because the King Arts Complex and Lincoln Theater make up part of the historic history and nature of this community. Arts and culture mean so much to the Near East Side. And so we're just happy to be out here to bring the committee outside of City Hall walls. And that's the biggest part about these committee hearings is to leave downtown, leave City Hall, and come out and have the public hearings in the community. And so I'm very appreciative that you all came out. Certainly appreciative of the different folks, community resources we have for small minority businesses that came to be with us. I want to start off by introducing two folks to my left and to my right. Mr. Ryan Schick, who is the Small Business Concierge in the Department of Development, and Chief Diversity Officer Stephen Francis with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. I'm going to give both of them an opportunity to introduce themselves, their departments, kind of a high level of what they do. And then we'll come back and we'll kind of take a deep dive into some specific areas. So with that, Mr. Schick.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. My name's Ryan Schick. I'm the Small Business Concierge of the City of Columbus. What is that? In essence, I help you navigate the complexity of either obtaining city permits or also going outside of the city, obtaining financing, assistance with business development plans, and any other need that you may require to open up your own small business here in Columbus. But it doesn't extend beyond the creation of your business. It also extends to the operation of your business, to finding new workforce, to helping you expand yourself, and to giving you resources that will bring you to scale. Thank you.
I'm Steve Francis, Chief Diversity Officer for the City of Columbus, and I'm heading up the newly established Office of Diversity and Inclusion, formerly known as the Equal Business Opportunity Commission. And just for an overview, the office now has four pillars with four main functions. One is diverse commitment and diverse communications, which deals with all the internal communication mediums that the city has and to try to populate that with relevant and thought-provoking diverse imagery and content to reinforce the commitment of the City of Columbus and the mayor to diversity and inclusion. More importantly, to clearly define what we mean when we say diversity and when we say inclusion. To some, diversity may mean a bullseye on the back. To some, it may seem to be an open door of opportunity. It's neither or, it's both. It's an "and," not an "or." We believe that diversity is to add to, not subtract from anybody. And inclusion is simply making sure that everybody has an access to opportunity and a voice. Commitment is the diversity committee that we established, and it's cross-functional. All the directors are on that committee, and the mayor holds each director personally accountable for what we track in terms of our diversity management through that committee process. There's a new workforce diversity pillar, which seeks to support directors in their attempt to hire a diverse workforce that reflects the Columbus community at large. And there is a supplier diversity pillar, which really embodies all the work that the EBO used to do. We're going to try to intensify the work that was done there and expand the services and provide more opportunities for businesses. And I'll talk a little bit about some stuff that we've got in store. And then lastly, outreach, diverse outreach. And imagine with, you know, incidents like the one involving Tyree King and others that we do need to have a community voice that is heard so that we can understand how they are feeling and expressing themselves as a result of what is occurring in our community. So we want to listen so we can learn.
Thank you. It's been really a pleasure to work with both of these men in this work day-to-day. Everybody should have an agenda in front of you. And just to go through how the rest of the evening will proceed. Well, we'll talk about upcoming legislation in both of the departments. We'll hear from our community resources, Ms. Ellen Harvey, Mr. Rome Jones, Mr. Omar, and Mr. Charles Hill from Rev. 1 will present and answer any questions. And then we will open the floor to any questions from folks here. If you have not received one, we have speaker slips. Just fill them out throughout the session, and you'll be free to ask any questions as we go along. With that, I'm going to pass it to Ryan to talk a little bit more about your department, the concierge, what it does for the city, and different resources that the Department of Development offers for the community.
Thank you, councilmember. Again, as I described earlier, opening a small business can seem rather daunting. And having somebody who is on the inside of government, who knows where to go and what to do, and being a one-stop shop for many, many years was a dream for all small business owners when they were interacting with city government. A little over two years ago, the City of Columbus City Council, headed by now-mayor Andrew Ginther, created the nation's first small business concierge. And that is, as I described, a one-stop shop for you to ask any question, whether or not it pertains to opening up your own shop with regards to building and zoning, public health inspections, where you can find financial resources to assist you in getting yourself up off the ground, if you need assistance in developing a business plan, if you need assistance acquiring financial capital. Those gentlemen over there will speak to it. And lady, excuse me, we're represented here by two of our wonderful lending partners this evening, ECDI and Finance Fund. But another thing that we do with the Department of Development is we administer two very key, critical programs that are of enormous benefit. And we're seeing significant growth in areas of low-income individuals, historically-relevant marketplace districts that are no longer being served. And the very first one is what's called the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. Any business inside of one of our seven corridors could receive up to $31,000 in matching grants, $25,000 exterior, $3,000, excuse me, $3,000 exterior, $25,000 interior. And those are matching grants to assist you in any capital purchase, whether or not it's acquiring new seating inside of your restaurant, new basins for your salon, or also putting out a new graphic sign that replaces one that could be many years, if not decades, old. That's more energy-efficient and saves you money. We have, through that program, we've done 160 visits this year, where we've gone directly to businesses, letting them know of the opportunities within this program. And having started the program two years ago, we went from doing two grants in 2014 to doing 25 grants last year, which is very exciting. But the areas, you can just look around the windows out here, and you can see what we're doing with NCR. Mount Vernon and specifically the King's Arts Center that we're sitting in right now have been recipients of the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Grants. Parsons Avenue, and I speak from that from a development perspective. Some very exciting things are going on down there. We're seeing developers come in. We're seeing small business owners beginning to invest in their shops and seeing increased sales because of those investments. The NCR, you've probably read about in the Dispatch recently. We are looking at ways that we can not only revamp this program, but also give it additional legs that will extend to other parts of the city. We have public hearings upcoming on the NCR districts. And we also have a study that we just received that was commissioned by an outside firm that looks at best practices for NCR nationwide. And we're pretty confident that if Austin can do it well, or if Kansas City can do it well, we can do it certainly better. The other topic I want to discuss are special improvement districts. We have five around the city. We have two downtown. We have Short North, Ohio State, and Warsh Road. Special Improvement District is where the resident neighbors, the resident businesses, all decide to come together and say, "We'd like to pay for additional sourcing outside of what the city provides," which is increased foot traffic for safety, increased designs and marketability for their businesses and for their neighborhood to begin to develop a name and a culture for itself. And lastly, cleanliness. And so all of these things would come in addition to city services, but at a much more rapid pace. And so if you have any questions on special improvement districts, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'll provide my card at the end to anybody who would like it. But the last thing that I want to talk about is obviously small business concierge. We talked about many of the successes tonight. And the thing that I think is going to be great is you're going to hear from several individuals this evening who have passed through my office, who have worked with me, whether or not it's on the public-private partnership side, or if it's the gentleman J.C., who makes some of the best chili in town. You're going to hear some of the stories on how that's been of impact to their business.
Thank you. A couple of questions, Ryan. You talked about the NCR program, the review that's underway. What is the timeline for that? I know that our last two public hearings, actually, one was on the NCR program in general we did up in Linden, and the other was on the SIDS. But what is the timeline for that review to come out? And how can folks find out more information about how they can take advantage of NCRs?
Absolutely. First and foremost, again, one-stop shop, please contact me, and I'll put you right in touch with those individuals who are going to be of significant import with the NCR program if you have any inputs or questions that you would like to provide. But I know that by early spring, they would like to be revamped with the NCR program, or at least have very, very significant community conversations about the soon-release final product.
Thank you. In the coming weeks before this session ends, this current session of Columbus City Council ends, we will bring forth a piece of legislation to finance the Finance Fund, which is a revolving loan program. Would you speak to this piece of legislation? And I'll call in Omar to give some more.
Absolutely. I'm going to lead on Omar for some of the specifics. But the Finance Fund, in addition to ECDI, Increased CDC, and others, is a public-private partnership. They are fiduciaries to your tax dollars in the same way that we try to reinvest our money. And so what we do through legislation is that we provide them with X amount of dollars in which they administer. They underwrite the loans. They administer the procurement of additional funds. And what's very interesting about this is I'm going to give you a statistic that we've lent over $1 million, we've lent over $1 million in the last year to the Finance Fund. But most importantly, the private sector has stepped in and has leveraged those dollars with 7.7 million in additional funding. So the Finance Fund is an excellent opportunity for you to take your business idea, your restaurant, or other organization that a conventional bank may not traditionally look at or may find too risky. And the Finance Fund, with their cooperation with the city, has been very good stewards with our taxpayers and has fully vetted individuals and has created some of the most prominent businesses that you see around town. But it's not just the Finance Fund. I do want to recognize ECDI. But this evening, we are dealing with legislation on the Finance Fund, so that's why there's a particular focus on this. But ECDI should not be overlooked, and I want to strongly emphasize that as well.
I guess I can speak to that a little bit more regarding leveraging public and private dollars. And that's basically our strength, as well as other CDFIs. CDFIs are community development financial institutions. Finance Fund is not a micro lender. ECDI is a micro lender. So that means that they provide much more technical assistance and support than we do. What we bring is capacity and leveraging funds for larger-scale projects. For example, since we've created FCAP Finance Fund Capital Corporation, we've made loans since 2006 and leveraged $74.5 million around the state. So the capacity that we bring is leveraging different sources of capital.
Thank you, Omar. And the Finance Fund, as well as ECDI, have been finance partners with the city. And like you said, these private and public partnerships that have helped us finance many small business loans. This specific piece of legislation is for $268,888.11. I think we are attempting to bring this piece of legislation before council next Monday. And so certainly, if you have any questions or concerns about this piece of legislation this evening, please bring it forward. We also will have opportunity on Monday's council meeting to talk more about this piece of legislation. Next, I am going to turn the mic over to my friend and the director. I probably work one of the closest with, Chief Steve Francis. The creation by Mayor Ginther of this Office of Diversity and Inclusion has been one that really has been very public. Folks have seen and have been able to engage with, but also has had real impact internally within the City of Columbus. His job is both outwardly and inwardly facing, where he really is calling to or holding all of our directors throughout the City of Columbus accountable for creating standards, for implementing what we hope and what the mayor hopes is really a vision for really creating this community where we can all engage and all be a part of. It's been a pleasure to work with him. And so I want to give him the opportunity to talk about some of the neat things that he's been working on over the last year and kind of a high-level overview of where he sees the department going over the next six months or so.
Thank you, councilmember. And I share the same sentiments. It's been good working with you and collaborating on some very important things. One of the first things we did was had Minority Business Enterprise Open House with a select group of our certified minority firms and female-owned firms. And we wanted to hear firsthand from them what some of the vexing issues were that were barriers to opportunity with the City of Columbus. Or if they were doing business with the city, how could we improve it or make it more user-friendly? How could we make our databases, you know, interface better with their equipment and their databases? So we heard them. They spoke loud and clear that they wanted a disparity study or predicate study, which really examines very narrowly whether there are disparities related to minorities or females receiving business opportunities with the city in a certain defined region. And so just last, in September, we commissioned an RFP seeking a firm to do that study. And we're excited that we will be able to act upon what the data tells us. You know, the numbers don't lie. They can sometimes hide. But we can weed through all the data and determine exactly what disparity exists. And it's our job to work very hard to eliminate that disparity. So the statute will likely call for a required percentage of contracts to go towards whatever disparity is identified, whether that be African-Americans, Hispanic businesses, female-owned businesses, to eliminate that disparity. The mayor has already taken some proactive steps to set the groundwork and to create an atmosphere of more inclusion and to start to change some of the mindset of the directors who have not been operating under a statutory goal in the past. So mindset is a hard thing to change. We're going to work diligently on that with support, not with directives, but support, to help them find ways and creative ways to trust in our minority female business communities to provide quality goods and services. Another thing that we're excited about is what we're calling an Ohio Municipalities Business Conference. And we're going to try to transform the formerly known as Mayor Small Business Conference into a statewide event that will focus on doing business with municipalities and other governmental and quasi-government entities like housing authorities, port authorities, transit authorities, school boards, counties, you know, all those important entities that make a city thrive and grow and that contract a lot of goods and services. So we're going to convene that here in Columbus next August. And we've issued an RFP for an event or a conference planner to help coordinate that event and plan that event. So we're getting the word out about that. That RFP will be due November 11th. The proposals for that, the proposals for the RFP for the disparity study will be due the 28th of October. So we hope to line up both of those contractors very soon so we can hit the ground running with some planning and intensive strategy towards achieving some of our goals. And Ryan talked about something that we're involved with, and the Department of Development is really supporting us as a partner, and what we're calling the Business Opportunity Assessment Program. And we're trying to make it a part of the certification process for becoming a certified business with the city. That after you certify, we want to assess whether you are in most need of access to capital, ECDI or microloans or some other sub-620 credit score financing, some unconventional financing. We've got a cadre of financial partners that can provide everything from bonding to microloans to ECDI, what have you. So we're excited about that because we want, or management and technical assistance. We've got some economic development professionals on, you know, on contract or available to help support our businesses through vexing, you know, business problems, operational problems. They're good business people, and they're skilled at what they do. But the back office sometimes is not their strength. So we want to help them dot the i, cross the t, so they can get that contract that they deserve. And then access to plant and equipment, assets, a new dump truck, in addition to their warehouse or what have you, some more, another engineer to help tackle that large project. So to Omar's point, we're focusing on building capacity of businesses. And we're focused on increasing the number of businesses certified with the city. That will eliminate the response that they can't find contractors that are of scale or capable to do the work. And that will eliminate the same unusual suspects that get the work all the time. We want to spread the opportunity that Mayor Ginther talks about, this being America's opportunity city. We want it to be an equal opportunity city, right? So that everybody gets a piece of the pie. And so another thing that we worked on just today with the City Attorney's Office is finalizing some revisions to Title 39, which really governs my office. It creates my office. And so we had to change all the names from Equal Business Opportunity to Office of Diversity and Inclusion. But we threw in a couple of bells, and we threw in a couple of whistles to maybe add some more teeth to what we're trying to do. And we're setting the groundwork for when we do get that disparity study back and we start putting some specific goals in the statute. So the transition won't be abrupt. It will be, you know, kind of gradual, leading up to that ideal state where we are a truly inclusive City of Columbus when it comes to both workforce diversity and supplier diversity. Also, we hired a manager to head up our workforce diversity initiatives. Randall Sistrung comes with a lot of experience in workforce development, reentry programs, all those things that we need to help create workforce pipelines. We train people that are otherwise skilled and have high work ethic. They just don't have the specific tools and know-how to get the work that's being needed today, you know, sort of retrofit them. And, you know, of course, diversifying police and fire. We're going to try to build some pipelines from our city schools and community colleges to reinvent the profession of policing and firefighting. You know, there's a saying that you don't have to be against black folks to be for the police. And the other is true. You don't have to be for the police to be against black people. So we want to dispel a lot of myths about police-community relations and the fact that it is a trusted and honored profession. We want to get back to that it does protect and serve. And so that young people will be excited about being a police officer and really taking their communities back. That's what we're talking about. Not complaining about being victimized, being a part of policing their own communities so that we at least try to eliminate some of the things that are going on in our country today. And training is a big part of what my office will do. We're going to try to double up our efforts to improve implicit bias training. As has been said in national media, everybody has implicit bias. But that becomes critically important when we're talking about law enforcement officials that carry weapons and have authority of the badge. We need to really be intensifying our training for implicit bias for our law enforcement officers so that they are safe and that the communities they police are safe. So I'm excited about all that work that needs to be done. And I'm glad to have a partner in this work in Shannon Hardin, Councilmember Hardin.
Thank you, chief. So simply put, Chief Francis's job is to solve all the issues that our city faces, or all the tough ones, really. And it really has been an honor to work with him. So I've worked for the city for the last seven years. And this idea of a disparity study is something that we've talked to small businesses about for several years. And there have been questions, concerns. Should we do it? Why shouldn't we do it? Can you give some kind of background? Because, one, I think it's a big deal that Chief Francis was able to come in and within several months get us to this point without much fanfare. It is a big, really, really big deal. One of the things that Mayor Ginther said in his State of the City was that if you don't track it, if you don't count it, it doesn't count. So until we get to, and until we get to holding ourselves, setting goals, and holding ourselves accountable for contracting within small minority businesses, we really aren't, we're not really hitting the mark. So this is a huge deal. It's been really neat to see you build the coalitions to get this done this quickly. You deserve a lot of appreciation, a lot of accolades for this. We're not done yet. We do have to get it done. But the fact that he was able to get an RFP out in the street this quick and the fact that we'll hear back in the next couple of weeks is a huge deal. Talk about the history of why we need these. When's the last time we've had one? The state put out one, and we're actually following kind of in their track here.
Yeah, thanks. And it is no small feat. And it is a big step to get the RFP out and to get the contractor on board. But I will say that the hard work comes once the goal is in place. We want, the disparity study takes about nine to 12 months to complete. So we want, leading up to that period of time, to, and I have my team, and some of my team is here, and they can, you know, kind of field some questions if you have some specific questions. But leading up to that time, it's incumbent upon us to identify capable and competent contractors that can do the work. Because it's one thing to have a goal, but you still have to have qualified and capable suppliers and businesses to be able to deliver on scale. We've been able to work on an unbundling project to try to break down some of those larger city contracts into smaller contracts or phases that can be sectioned off into smaller phases so that it doesn't summarily exclude certain businesses that aren't of scale to take on a $10 million contract, for example. So, you know, capacity is built by reasonably-sized contracts to build capability and familiarity and experience. So that's what we want to do. And so our team is reaching out to all of our certified's to assess capability, to categorize what they're capable of doing, all the commodities, to make sure they're listing all their commodities so that if they're missing a commodity that they can provide service in, we don't miss that. We want to be able to meet that goal with a cadre of qualified suppliers. And so, again, it's on us to make that happen. But it is on the business community to, again, go through our Business Opportunity Assessment Program and recognize that they do need help. And, you know, we're going to be using Jerome Jones' shop as well to help them scale up and get the resources they need to operate and and get the resources they need to operate and perform at that next level. And, you know, change is hard. And when you tell folks you have to do something because the law says it, people get creative. But you have to still help them. So, I'm going to be a resource, support to all the directors and all the departments to make sure that they understand all the different ways that they can skin the cat, if you will. So, that there's no excuses, there's just effort to try to make it happen.
Thank you, Chief Francis. And just a reminder again that if you would like to ask questions of anybody up here, we have speaker forums. You'll be able to ask questions very, very shortly. I'm kind of jumping around a little bit because I want to make sure that we get to all of the questions that we have and also into just real one-on-one engagement with the different folks, the different community resources that we have here for small businesses, but also us. So, what I would ask is, starting with Ms. Ellen, would you introduce yourself, what ECDI does, and kind of go down, down a list, and then we'll come back and open it up for questions for all of us?
Okay, no problem. Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. We do have a lot of support that comes from the city of Columbus. I do want to acknowledge that, not only from our loan funds, which allows us to leverage and provide funding for small businesses, but also the initiative of our Women's Business Center, that they provide funding for us to help alleviate the disparity that women have in operating and obtaining a new business. So, thank you for that. So, I'm here representing the ECDI Economic Community Development Institute. We are a 501(c) nonprofit organization. We were founded in 2004. We are around to create measurable enduring social and economical, economic change, and we do that through several different programs that we offer. The first and foremost, I think is most relevant this evening, is the microloan program that we have. The microloan program allows for startup businesses to receive funding up to $75,000 and for existing businesses to receive funding up to $350,000. Five-year terms, no prepayment penalties. Interest is a little higher than what you might receive at the bank, but it is allowing those who are not able to be able to start a business access to that funding. In addition to that, we do have the newly-founded Small Business, SBA, Small Business Administration, Women's Business Center that was started four years ago. And like I said, that is to alleviate the challenges that women have in starting and growing their business. And we do that through training, one-on-one counseling, mentoring, a center that women are able to come in and work out of. In addition to that, we have a food fort, which is a licensed kitchen and bakery. So, food businesses, caterers and so forth that need a place to operate out of, who can't afford to have a retail space, a licensed kitchen, have access to that resource as well. And then, we do some other, other programs like home repair. That is a grant program that allows for repairs to homes of the elderly and disabled. In addition to that, we have some great training programs that are for scale-up businesses as well as retail businesses focused on how do you start a retail business. So, some of the things that we do at ECDI.
Good evening. My name's Jerome Jones and I'm with the Ohio Small Business Development Center at Columbus State Community College. That's why we go by the SBDC because that's a mouthful to say all the time. We provide a number of training services. So, we assist you with business planning, strategic planning, deal structuring, finding you money, finding you the right money at the right time. We use a lot of service providers and business partners, including both of the lending partners to either side here. I have deals actually right now with both of them. We have service providers in the, in the audience. We have free marketing, social media, and sales training classes. We can, we have certification classes for female and minority-owned businesses. And we also have a QuickBooks class for intro to QuickBooks. So, if you have a small business, you really need to have some kind of accounting software. I don't care if it's QuickBooks or not, but you need to be able to track your money. Trust me on that. We also have, want to speak on two lending programs that we offer. Celtic Bank is one. It's an SB Express Loan. Banks in the area also offer an SB Express Loan. The difference with Celtic Bank, it goes up to $150,000. It's a 10-year term. Rates are on a tiered basis. So, anything under $25,000 doesn't require collateral. And it's at eight and a quarter. From $25,000 to $50,000, it's seven and a quarter. And over $50,000, it's six and a quarter. There's no prepayment penalty and they don't take personal assets. So, that's a big difference between that and a local commercial bank. The other thing I want to talk about is KIVA. I'm a certified KIVA advisor. So, KIVA is an international microloan program that goes up to $10,000. The great thing about that, it's 0% interest. I'll say that again, no interest. So, I don't care what your credit score is. You can have the highest credit score ever recovered, ever recorded. A bank is not going to do a 0% interest loan for you. There's no collateral required for this program. And it is not a credit score-driven program. It's more social lending. So, I'll explain more of that on a one-on-one basis. But it's a great program for anyone who needs $10,000 or less. You can be a startup. The industry really doesn't matter. It's specifically designed for, to fill gaps and to be seed money for startup businesses. Oh, training. Last thing, marketing. We have a track of training course. I get so excited about these classes. So, we have eight weeks of free training, four weeks of marketing, one week of social media, and three weeks of sales. That eight straight weeks of free training for small businesses that you really must take advantage of. And we have something called Biz Start. Typically, startup businesses and any business under two years of age, we send through Biz Start. It's the first, second, and third Tuesday of every month. The first Tuesday is an introduction to small business. The second Tuesday, we have an attorney who happens to be in the back, Mr. Moses, who speaks about legal structure. And I tell small businesses also, this is an opportunity to ask an attorney questions because we have him captive there for about an hour. I won't let him leave until he answers questions. The third Tuesday, we have an accountant that speaks about some of the tax implications of small business ownership and a brief overview of financial statements.
That's hard to follow, guys. Wanted to just talk very briefly about Finance Fund. We are a CDFI, just like ECDI. That means, again, Community Development Financial Institution. So, what's the difference between us and a bank? We're pulling private and public capital and trying to implement that into communities that need that capital the most, right? And so, we depend on our partners like ECDI and like Jerome to be our eyes and ears, like our representative, Shannon Harden, actually. Got a, got a deal from you, actually, that I'm working on. So, but we have to, we can't be everywhere. And so, we, we depend on the community. We depend on you guys. So, check out our website, financefund.org, to see our programs. Our sweet spot is usually between 200 and 400,000. That means not as many startups, but we still can do projection lending. But we'd like to see businesses that are growing and we want to help them grow. So, those, that's really our small business lending. Another initiative we just started is our Healthy Food for Ohio. And I'm not sure if anybody here has heard about the concept of a food desert, but we have a lot of those around the state of Ohio now. That means that these are areas that have very low grocery store sales because there is no grocery store. And so, these communities don't have access to fresh fruits and vegetables and are surrounded by fast food restaurants. And so, we, we want to encourage and incentivize operators to locate in these food deserts. And so, we have a program that incentivizes them by overcoming the financial hurdles with grant funds. Currently, we've raised $4 million for the state in grants and $8 million in lending. And so, again, we, we look towards the communities to volunteer individuals and say, hey, this person is operating a great store. He wants to expand. Or this guy is struggling because his equipment is just, you know, it keeps breaking down and, you know, he needs to upgrade his equipment. So, we need the, the communities to be our eyes and ears. Again, the website is financefund.org.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Charles Hill. I'm the Director of Community Outreach at Rev One Ventures. At the first start, before I get started, to just thank Councilman Harden for involving Rev One in this and also for caring. Speaking from a son of an entrepreneur, minority business is important to me and it's important to this community and the growth and impact that we have. So, I thank you for setting us up and caring enough to help minority businesses. We are a seed-stage venture development organization. At the high level, our mission is very simple. We help entrepreneurs grow great companies. That's exactly what we do. We feel that our model is best in breed in the sense of we have taken what the industry has said is best in helping startups actually grow their business. So, we are part venture accelerator. And what that means is that we're part accelerator in the services that we provide and we're part venture capital in the funding that we offer. So, we're not a bank. We do have money. We like to help entrepreneurs actually grow great companies. Everything that we do is about impact. We have a goal by the end of year 2018 to have a $2 billion impact in central Ohio. We do that in two distinct ways, and that is the, the capital that we attract from the companies that we start and the, the revenue that's generated from those companies. Right now, 2016, we're already past $1 billion in that goal. So, in the next two years, we'll definitely be there. We're on track to do that. Last year alone, we started over 1,000 jobs with the companies that we've started, which is big. We've created diversity within the venture capital division. We're actually about 30% of the companies that we've funded are either minority, ran, or women-led businesses. That is four times the percentage of what other VCs actually offer. So, we're looking to improve that even more this, coming up this year. But we're simple. We are specialized in startup and seed-stage organizations. Basically, what that means, if you've got a concept in your head, we want you there. We don't want you to build a product yet. We want you to, help you validate that product to make sure that you have a market for what you're actually offering. We partner with ECDI, SBDC, and a lot of other partners in the region. We feel that we're the hub for entrepreneurship and we work with all of our partners within the region to actually be able to do that.
Thank you, Charles. And thank you, everyone, for, for that presentation. The, the folks here are just a small sampling of folks that we work with that are doing amazing work out in the community to support and empower minority, small businesses, entrepreneurs to get out there and get started. I think that the ecosystem is what we're, we're working on, is becoming stronger and stronger by the day and it's because of the partnerships. And so, certainly appreciate it. I'm going to go, before I go any further, I want to recognize, I think I have, we have a quorum of school board that is here. So, there will be no school board business speaking. But I want to recognize our community partners, our school board members, President Gary Baker, who's in the back, Mr. Mike Cole, Vice President Mike Cole, Ms. Ramona Reyes, and school board member Shawna Gibbs. Thank you so much for coming out and being here. We're going to move into the speaking portion. And again, I want to encourage you, we will break out. So, if you have specific questions about how you can use some of the resources up here, you can, we can have the conversations on the side, but also take this opportunity to, to come up and ask the questions. We have several folks who have signed up. First, we're going to have Mr. Mustafa Shabazz. Please, please. Would you state your name, your address, anybody you might refer to?
Mustafa Shabazz. Address is 1493 East Livingston, owner of Ujma Bookstore. I'm also the President and CEO of the Livingston Avenue Business Association. So, we have about 66 businesses under our umbrella. So, it's very good to be here at the meeting because we can definitely hook up with a lot of the resources that you've brought here that those businesses can access as well. Just a couple of questions. One was, we'd like to invite the concierge to some of our Business Association meetings, which is every first Saturday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Livingston, Driving Park Library. That's one thing. We'd like to have you discuss more about the SIDS program with those businesses and residents that do come to that meeting. Secondly, we have a situation in which, as Steve, Mr. Francis, was discussing to, to bring about some solutions to in terms of disparity, is that me representing a business association, certain business in our community had a contract with the city and part of the contract was 20% would go to minorities. And that hasn't evolved yet. So, as a business association president, you know, I've been asked to take on the lead of, you know, how do we make sure that that developer who was given city dollars, make sure that 20% of those city dollars given will go to minority contractors in the, under the Livingston Avenue Business Association umbrella? So, that's, that's kind of a question, you know, what, what, what do we do? Is that something we just, do I give you a call? Is that something we, you know, I mean, how, how do you handle that?
Yeah, thanks, Mustafa. And I, I actually want to call out Thomas Stevens, who's one of my, is the deputy that is in charge of the office. He will be able to talk to you offline and get the specific details on the actual contract, the status of it, and track it down. Again, that's our job to make sure that, from a compliance standpoint, the primes pay the amount that they're supposed to, to all the subs, particularly those minority business enterprises. Now, one thing that I'll also ask Thomas to do is make sure that all those minority firms that are a part of the Livingston Avenue Business Association become certified with the city of Columbus. Because, again, one of my goals is to double the number of businesses certified with us. And the second is to build their capacity so they can take on next-level work. So, hopefully, we can get you the answers you need, Mustafa. But that's not the stuff that we'd like to hear.
Would you please keep my office in the, in the loop on that? I am interested to hear the details of the, the contractor you're talking about and the specifics of it. Thank you. Next, I'm going to call up Ms. Karma Hayes-Paines with a slice of Karma. And I also, I haven't tried it yet. I've been waiting for this moment to try her.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. I had a little speech prepared, but I'm not going to read it.
No, go ahead.
But, well, this is what I want to say. The SBDC, I see Jerome and Ariana here. I'm not going to cry. But I walked into their office on a rainy day. Jerome comes to the door and I'm like, who is this dude? He just looked at me like, he said, why are you here? And I walked in, I bake, there's cheesecakes and pound cake there. Hopefully, you'll try it. And I walked in and it was like a small business Disney world. Everything that you need is there. They tell you what to do. Ariana tells you what to do even when you think you know what to do. They tasted, tasted my food. They told me how to incorporate my business. I'd been to Biz Start classes. There's just nothing that they haven't done. And growing up as a little girl in Columbus, in Clifton Avenue, I didn't even know anything like this would happen here. I went to private schools and I thought, well, if you know people, you can start a business because that's what you see. But this just lets me know that this community will support you. If you have a small business, go visit them because there's just nothing, you, you show up and you know how to bake and then you leave and you realize that you can run a business. And that's been my experience. So, hopefully, you'll taste the cake and hopefully, you'll visit them and thanks for the opportunity.
Ms. Karma, can I ask you a couple of questions? Thank you so much for being here. First of all, that is amazing. I can't wait to finish. I need like a napkin up here so I can really, really go in. First of all, your last statement was really profound. You know, you, you go in with your, your gift and you leave with, as a business. That's powerful. How are you doing? Where are you at right now? In what stage of you, of your business are you in? And how specifically have they, they helped get you there?
I am in the, what do you call it, R and D phase? Because I bake every day, every morning, every morning. It's just cathartic. It's what I do. But right now, I have an intern. They tell me, you got to get help. You need a team. You need, what are you doing when you're not visiting us? You can't just bake and then come see Jerome. You got to, you got to do something in the meantime. So, I have an intern and I've met a fat- So I have an intern and I've met a photographer and just other people in this community that have skills so we can build a team. So I have a website that's under development. I've got all my papers incorporated with the state and I'll have to talk to this gentleman to become certified with the City of Columbus. But that's where I am now.
Thank you, thank you.
And we can provide a research and development assistant for taste testing. And I would, I could do that for you.
Okay, well, the list is long. The list is long. And I did want to say that when it comes to dessert, there is definitely, I can address the implicit bias issue because desserts make everybody feel good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to call up Mr. Dan Moncrief.
The Dan Mancrief, Moncrief.
Good evening. My name's Dan Moncrief. I'm the Chairman, CEO of McDaniel's Construction Corp., Construction Company. Been in business 32 years here in town. I'm on the National Board for the National Association of Minority Contractors. But I was asked by some of my colleagues to come in and, first of all, thank and congratulate the city for moving with lightning speed on getting a predicate study on the street. We all work for several different agencies around town, not just the city. And a lot of agencies have told us that they can't do anything more for us because they don't have any teeth or legislation either. So, that being said, my question is, can other agencies within the city's boundaries of the predicate study enjoin or adopt your study once it's done? If not, would the city considering delaying the due date on the predicate study and inviting those companies in or those agencies through their boards or whatever to be a part of this? So when one study's done, I can see a cost sharing, but I'd also see then these other agencies can have teeth also to do the right thing if the predicate study in fact says it needs to be done.
That's an excellent question and a great point, Dan, and I think you've whispered that in my ear once before. And I'm intrigued by the idea of talking to Franklin County, talking to Ohio State University, talking to
I've got 12 names for you.
Several organizations that can leverage what we're trying to do. What we've, and I've talked to the mayor about this, we've tried to, we're trying to raise the bar of inclusion within this region and I've had conversations with folks down at the Columbus Partnership and other places about getting their constituents on board and supporting this across the board or across the region effort. So yeah, we do want to lead by example and if we can get others to the table and join in on our study or adopt the results because it might, the regional boundaries may encompass their organizations anyway. So it might be able to speak for them and they might be able to leverage that. So we're going to research that and make sure that we do get the most bang for this buck. And I appreciate your vigilance in making sure that, I mean, that's the kind of voice, the inclusive voice that we need from the business community who, two and three heads are better than one and we need that outside voice to check and balance us on how we're thinking as we approach policy development. So, thanks, Dan.
Chief, is that able, or would they be able to use our data, folks who are completely incorporated in our geographic research for our predicate study? Is that something that could be done? Would that give them the same type of legal support to go and create their own standards?
Well, you know, I happen to be a lawyer. I also play one on TV. But anyway, we were planning on leveraging a recently completed study to see if we could capitalize off of the data that had already been generated to not only save money but to save time and just maybe carve out from that statewide study that had recently been finished, the region within central Ohio that we're focused on. So we're going to do whatever the law allows us to do to save time, money, and be most effective. But we want to make sure we do it right. I have a saying that we want to be right, not rush, you know? Because ready, aim, shoot is not, or ready, shoot, aim is not the way to go. We want to be very deliberate and thoughtful about how we do it so that we're effective.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm going to call up J.C. Lasmanis with J.C.'s Just Chili.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the small business concierges, but also for inserting someone between food and me. And hopefully, everybody's forgotten you got free samples. And so I couldn't bring it aside. Anyway, very quickly, for years, I've wanted to, it's been really annoying that I can't get good chili year-round and consistently. And so I wanted to start a business and actually, I started out with ECDI when I found out they're building this food fort and they had a kitchen. And so I looked at my wife and I said, okay, let's do it. We want to do it, let's do it. So we did. And we decided not to do a food cart, not to do a food truck, but to have a actual brick and mortar place where we would be selling chili. And in that process, we found rental property on Fifth Avenue and that's where the real saga started of all of the issues with what the Health Department requires and then what the building inspection process is. And I was at my wit's end because we wanted to serve chili out of three soup kettles. And according to the regulations, we had to have an in-ground grease trap that would go in the alley. They have to tear up the alley and all of that. And so I thought, well, there's no scale to this regulation, so I need help. So actually, I went back to ECDI and I was complaining about this to Bob Kramer. And so he said, well, there's this gentleman who helped us with a similar issue. And he found his card and so I contacted Ryan and we walked through that one. Then I had some other issues in terms of what it was, the actual build-out, which, once I got the bids on it, I said, I can't afford this. So we weren't going to do it. And since we didn't pull the permits I'd paid for, I figured, okay, well, not pulling permits. We're just going to scale it down. We sell it frozen and refrigerated. And next thing I know, I get a thing slapped on my window. It says, stop and all work, dis- disappear, don't do this anymore. So I get on the phone and I call Ryan. Ryan, help! And so he walked me through that. Bottom line is that with all of that, if I hadn't had that access, I think I'd be probably where I am today. Not as far along because it would have taken me longer. I probably would have had to hire attorneys, tried to figure out the whole process, tried to negotiate, because I didn't even know who to negotiate with because I can't negotiate with a regular, with a regulation. I've got to have a person and someone to help me. And he's just an excellent job and I was just telling him that I, this was early on, I think he just started the office, maybe what, maybe about five months?
I think it was less than that.
Less than that. So he wasn't well-known, but I think anybody who's going to start a business is going to have a lot of regulations attached to it, like a food business. There should be a way of just everybody knowing that that office exists because it was absolutely essential to our getting started and getting it off the ground. So just thank you for having that office. And Ryan?
I will have to admit that the want and passion of helping people is, they don't discriminate based upon your type of industry, but when it comes to chili. Sorry, there's always a little extra motivation there. I do strongly recommend you go try their chili.
Where's that? Where's located?
It's 1617 West Fifth Avenue. It's that little part of Fifth Avenue that's actually the city and not Grandview or Marblehead.
And don't let them fool you into trying the vegetarian chili. I'm telling you, it's the beef chili. So he's got everything there for you.
Thank you. So I think I, we received our first ever question from Facebook. And so I'm just going to read it. Why is there the assumption, I think this is, I'm going to pitch it to you, Chief Francis. Why is there the assumption that minority businesses need to build their capacity in order to do work with the City of Columbus? Are others held to this standard?
That's a great question. I did not mean to imply that minority and female-owned businesses start at a deficit. What I'm speaking to is, there is a historic deficit. There is not an even playing field. Let's not be mistaken. And so you know the saying, when some folks get a cold, others get the pneumonia. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about leveling the playing field so that years and years of institutional discrimination and barrier to equal opportunity and access to opportunity is eliminated so that decades and centuries of getting business contracts from cities is evenly distributed among all communities, business communities. And let's not kid ourselves, there is implicit bias involved in that. There's this subliminal idea that, with those in charge, that folks that look different than them can't, just can't do the same job or they aren't capable of doing the work. Because to no fault of theirs, they've only seen people that look like them do the work. So that's just a natural, it's a fear of the unknown or it's, it's, it's a, so I'm not talking, I'm not disparaging diverse firms. They are some of the most capable and skilled business people out there. They just haven't been given the opportunity. And so that's what I'm talking about. And I believe that the statute with a goal in it will open the eyes and it will be an awakening, an epiphany that, wow, these folks can do good work and competition is good. And we were getting ripped off by these people, these good old boys that we've been doing business with and not questioning them at all. So we're adding value. Diversity is valuable. And we just have to open up the eyes and take off the blinders to that so that people get used to doing business with people that don't look like them.
And Chief, one of the things that I've liked that you've talked about is really about building the business's capacity to not just do work with the city and government agencies, but also do business in the private sector where there is a lot of money out there as well. And so, you know, we want to make sure that these companies have the partnerships, have the ability to get bonding, have all those things that they need to go out there and compete and not just compete, but win the contracts that we know that they can do. So I appreciate, I appreciate the question. I appreciate your work in this space. The last speaker slip that we have is from Ms. Sandra Moody Gresham. Come up. Just want to encourage, if anybody else wants to speak before, we have a few more minutes. If not, we will conclude with Ms. Sandra.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share. And I just first want to applaud the city and I've been fortunate to work with many of you. I'm Sandra Moody Gresham and my company is DeHahn Enterprises Insurance and Financial Services. So we do commercial insurance, employee benefits, insured and contract bonds. My question, and I do want to state before I share my question, I do want to give kudos to Ryan too, who helped me do some zoning work to get my signage on my building right at Main near Parsons Avenue. So the work that he does is very important and I've also worked with many of the finance people over here in my efforts. But my question is for Director Francis. In your opening comments, you mentioned about some modifications to Title 39, not just the name of your office, but some other concepts that would bring some teeth to Title 39. So could you speak to some of those and what kind of changes that we can expect to see in that legislation?
Sure, Sandra. And I can't speak with specificity because we haven't handed the legislation over to Shannon Harden yet for his committee to review it and officially approve it. But I can say in general terms that we've looked at good faith effort and seen how we can strengthen that a little bit. You know, sometimes good faith effort is thumbing through the phone book or sending a couple of emails and checking the box and saying, well, we tried. That's not going to be good enough. So let me just say that. One other thing is this Business Opportunity Assessment Program. We want to codify that and make sure that as a part of the certification process, businesses leave the certification process better than they came in, capable of getting access to more financing, MNTA, Management Technical Assistance and plant and equipment. Some other things that were in the statute, but not specifically cross-referenced with other statutory authority in the purchasing area, we want to make sure that we have that authority to review certain things, to sign certain things, to be involved in certain evaluation committees so that we can do the job that I think our office was actually set up to do. You know, just as their partner, not as their antagonist, but as their partner to support them in making sure that they do the right thing.
And city council, certainly, I'm certainly looking forward to getting the legislation. I'll tell you that the essence of what we've been talking about and working towards is strengthening Chief Diversity Officer's position within the city, giving them, giving that department, that director, the ability to go out and to create the space to kind of move the ball. And this is above and beyond. Before the ODI, we had the EBOC, Equal Business Opportunities Commission. And so we are actually kind of in new space and creating new space. And so this piece of legislation, Title 39, these improvements, I think will further strengthen Director Francis's ability to move some of these balls forward.
Yeah, and I will add, I mean, the commission under the EBOC legislation really never, hasn't existed for a while. And to your earlier question, we haven't had a disparity study in over 10 years. So we've had a void of teeth. So that disparity study will definitely be some teeth. I call our legislation denture legislation right now, but we're going to put some teeth in it. So. But the advi-
Timeline for 39, by the end of the year?
By the end of the year. But the advisory council, we want to make that, we want to revive that and make it relevant so that members from the community and business owners can be part of a sounding board for our office to advise us periodically on how we're doing when we shape policy. Are we missing anything? What are they seeing that we don't see? So that advisory council is going to be critically important as, again, a tool of inclusion to make sure that others are involved in our process. And, you know, we're also getting minority and female businesses involved in evaluating this disparity study. So there'll be some members of the business community involved in evaluating who will be that contractor to do the disparity study. So we're proud of the way that we're trying to reach out and include the business community to help us make the important decisions we need to make.
Thank you. And if we don't have any more speaker slips, so, well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I hope that, and every time that I host this committee in particular, my hope is that it was worth your time. I know that as small business owners and entrepreneurs, every minute that you're not doing your skill, you're not making money or you could be making money. So I appreciate you taking the time to be here with me this evening and be away with your families. Want to certainly thank Ms. Ellen, Jerome, Omar, Charles for being here. Like I said, they will stick around for a few seconds to answer any questions one-on-one. Certainly want to thank the King Arts Complex for hosting us this evening. Thank ODI staff. I saw Ms. Caitlin Poindexter here. Thomas Stevens is here.
Got Duane Parks.
Yeah, oh, yes. Parks is here. Your whole team, your whole squad is here.
Hey, they might get a little bit of acknowledgement.
Hey, they might get a little bit of acknowledgement for that for showing up.
Working late. Right, there you go. Certainly want to thank CTV for taping and broadcasting this so that this information can get out to the larger community. Really appreciate you. And would not be able to do this without my staff, my team, Zach Davidson and Linda Kappel Bianca, who was outside. Thank you, everyone, for being here. That concludes this hearing.